Welcome to FPB's Meet the Candidates, cable 10 show, which allows you, the viewers, to learn directly from the candidates on issues important to you. Today's guest, I'm sorry, is Kelly May, candidate for city commission. And thank you for taking time to come and interview with us.
My pleasure.
Glad to have you here. And we'll start off with the easiest one.
Sure.
Just tell us about yourself and why you're running for city commission.
Absolutely. Well, my name is Kelly May. I'm serving currently in my second term as city commissioner. I'm here doing the job now, and I'm really proud of that. I was born and raised here in Frankfurt. I married my high school sweetheart about 12 years ago. We have two wonderful daughters together. We're raising them here in this community. 10 years ago, we started our first business with some friends of mine in downtown Frankfurt. And then about five years ago, we started a second business with another group of friends of mine. And we've been focusing on family and focusing on being successful, running those businesses together, and how we can move Frankfurt together, both as a city commissioner and then as a citizen.
Okay. Well, away from business and politics, tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're into.
Sure. Hobby wise, you know, if I am not running around the yard with my daughters, and it's late at night, I'm going to have a guitar in my hand. I'm a musician. I grew up playing drums, love the arts, have always been a big advocate for the arts. They changed my life. I know as a child.
Right.
And those are kind of my big passions. If I can get out and fish, I will go and do that as well.
Yeah.
Love going out with my father in law. Golf, I love playing golf. I'm not good.
Yeah.
I don't go out to try to be good. I go out to have fun and look for that, you know, one, two, if I'm lucky, three, good shots that keep me coming back.
Yeah. When I play, I figure if I play poorly, I get more for my money and
Right.
and I get to see more of the course than most people.
That's true.
You know, so, well, what has your experience as a city commissioner taught you, or will benefit you in your upcoming term as city commissioner if you should win?
Sure. I think, you know, the, the one thing that I've learned over the past little over three and a half years by listening to this community is that we're all seeking the same thing. We want a safe community. We want a community that has resources and accessibility for all of us, you know, down to our most vulnerable population. I truly believe, you know, we're only as good as, you know, we have to judge ourselves by our most vulnerable population.
Mm hmm.
We want, we want recreational facilities. You know, I'm the type of person, when I travel, I pay attention to communities and what I see that's vibrant there and working for them and want to bring those things back. So when I take my daughters to a birthday party, to an indoor aquatic facility in a neighboring community, of course, I'm thinking to myself, you know, how do we get this back home? This is great. You know, we need this here. Absolutely. You know, we want, we want businesses that thrive, that know that when they open up here, they're going to have a strong customer base that will be coming back through, although it'll be exciting. You know, we have a great tourist market with Buffalo Trace and other distilleries around. I've always said Frankfurt can make its own bourbon trail.
Yeah.
It's on spinoff. We have enough going on here now. So yeah, it's, it's a great time to be living in Frankfurt, and we're all, we're all chomping at the bit for the same thing.
Okay. Well, what do you see being, what do you see as the most pressing issue facing Frankfurt right now?
I think as elected leaders, we need to be focused again back on our most vulnerable population. We need to be talking about what we can do for the homeless, for those that are struggling to find affordable housing. Our role is to collect taxes and provide services. But when we have individuals in our community who don't have the same access to those services, we've got to be taking a step back and looking at what we can do to make things better. I believe we, as a commission, you know, not just as an individual commissioner, but this past two commissions that I've served on have taken great steps in addressing those. You know, we formed, helped form the CARES Coalition.
Yeah.
And have supported them, supporting programs like E S Arts, supporting Wanda Joyce Robinson Foundation, looking at how we can be proactive rather than reactive to the situation. You know, every time there's a, you know, if, if an individual who is homeless is put in the back of an ambulance and transported, it's about a $1,700 trip each time. And they won't necessarily have the means to pay for that. So the city of Frankfurt will end up going through a collection agency, and then ultimately, we won't see any money back for that. So our tax dollars are going to the problem whether we want to address it by reacting or being proactive. And I think it's just absolutely vital that we do everything we can to be proactive.
Okay. Um, you know, you're a business owner yourself, but how would you work to attract new businesses and jobs to Frankfurt while supporting the existing local businesses?
Well, I think we got to start by listening to the local businesses that are here that have a story to tell and/or that have issues and concerns that they need addressed. I've gone through the process of opening up businesses here, as we've talked about a little bit, one of which was a historical property. And I think, you know, that's a unique asset that Frankfurt has that we can really capitalize on, but it also creates unique challenges. And so as a city, we need to be prepared to answer those questions for business owners when they're coming in about what those challenges may be and how we can help support them either through grants, technical assistance, continuing to help tell their story, supporting, you know, DFI, for example, who does, you know, a great job of letting people know what's going on in our downtown business district, supporting the economic agencies, KCDC, the help with the industrial side and help communicate the message as well. That's it, you know, getting, getting that positive message out and showing the success stories.
Right. Well, considering we have two bridges closed indefinitely and Taylor Avenue closed indefinitely, what are your plans for improving infrastructure in the city, particularly the bridges, roads, sewer lines?
Absolutely. You know, it is, it's a very, very unique. This is one of those things that you don't expect to happen when you run. You know, you, you have in the back of your mind that certainly there will be challenges and things will pop up, but to have a rock slide, to have the bridge be, be closed on, to have the Broadway Bridge falling apart, it is, is a unsettling time to take a step back and look at. I'm glad that the city of Frankfurt, back in March, you know, before the singing bridge was closed, we did apply for a grant with the state of Kentucky, looking ahead, trying to be proactive to help up the load bearing so that our emergency vehicles could cross there again. But now, we are waiting, I believe next week, we will hear a final report on the Taylor Avenue project. The initial report was that we should expect another event in zero to 15 years.
Yeah.
So that will most likely remain closed indefinitely.
Okay.
Again, that final report should be out next week. With, with the Broadway Bridge, I'm of the mindset now that, you know, the state has the opportunity to take it down. It's, it's their project. We need to let them do that, let it play its course. I think it's an opportunity for us to take a step back, really think about what our plans are for the future of Taylor Avenue, of that side of the river, and think about how we could transform that area. And then talk about, you know, pedestrian bridge when the time comes.
Okay. Well, and you're kind of, you were kind of addressing that, but what are your financial priorities when it comes to balancing the city's budget and managing its finances responsibly?
Well, you know, the budget for me, I look at it, it's, it's kind of a living, breathing document. You know, we are required by CARES to have one balance submitted in time. But I look at it the same way that I look at really approaching all the decisions, which is, what is the, what's taxpayer want us to be investing in? We know public safety is number one priority. We know that the amenities side of parks are going to be a priority. And then, you know, you kind of let the city manager and the finance director take those priorities and initiatives and put them in play.
Okay.
You know, we've gone through, the first budget cycle was, was a difficult one for us because we lost a little over $3 million in operational tax during COVID with the state being out. And we had to be, you know, kind of creative in, in how we went about covering the daily, you know, the operational cost.
Mm hmm. Can you talk a little bit about the Frankfurt Franklin County Comprehensive Plan and your thoughts on the priorities of the plan?
Sure. I think, you know, my priority right now is to see it get passed. You know, I'd like to have it, have it be done. So we know the direction that we're headed. I think Frankfurt needs to tackle, from an economic standpoint, you know, we hear conversations about industrial growth versus infill growth. I'm the type of person that I don't believe it's one or the other. I think the solution here is really both.
Yeah.
I will say, I strongly believe the biggest, you know, bang for your buck, if you will, the industrial growth side. Frankfurt has huge opportunities there. When you look at jobs per acre, average annual salary that those jobs create, you know, the Commonwealth right now as a whole is, is booming with industrial growth. We're seeing those investments all around. Frankfurt needs to be poised and ready for those as well and be pad ready. But we have to have huge, serious conversations about who runs the utilities to these facilities. You know, our sewer, like we were talking about earlier with infrastructure, you know, these are going to be 10 to millions of dollars of investments in infrastructure. So there's going to have to be partnerships together and, and work. And I think the comprehensive plan balances the wants and needs of the community right now.
Okay. And so, yeah, I mean, that's, that was the next question is how do you plan balanced development with the preservation of rural and agricultural land in Frankfurt and Franklin County?
I think you have to be strategic.
Mm hmm.
And by that, I think you have to, again, we do have a lot of great natural resources in this community that make us unique, and we have a tourist market that depends on that. The ecotourism market is huge. I think it's vital to a happy and healthy community to have these rural areas protected. But you also have to look at areas that maybe have an opportunity to be used in other ways without impacting the final, kind of the final way out of the land, if you will. So, you know, I think we have areas we can do both.
Right.
We have massive opportunities at 127 to grow. I think our natural resources, though, do need to be protected and preserved.
Okay. So what specific industries would you like to have come to Frankfurt?
We obviously have a growing bourbon industry in this Commonwealth, contributing to billions of dollars in tax revenue.
Mm hmm.
I do believe that Frankfurt is poised and perfect to continue to see that expansion, and we are seeing that. I think from that, you're going to see the ancillary industries pop up, and those are the ones we need to be attracted to right now, or trying to attract. How do we support that tourism market?
Okay.
Hotels. We have two opening up downtown, two boutique hotels opening up very soon. From that, you know, we need to have places to eat. We need to have places to shop. I think attracting the local business is a priority of mine always. But we can't ignore the fact that the quote unquote, big box stores also have a, you know, a purpose in our community and provide essential services to our community as well.
Okay. What about housing? How would you, what strategies do you have for addressing housing concerns in Frankfurt of all levels?
Sure. We have, as I'm sure the community knows, formed the Affordable Housing Committee to start trying to tackle this from a data and analytical standpoint. Then they, once they meet, they get back and kind of present to the commission. We have a project going on right now off Shinkle Lane for the East Interceptor with the sewer project. And when that project is wrapped up, there's about 30 acres there that the city will be releasing an RFP on for affordable housing. We have made it a priority of ours. We have continued to seek funding and technical assistance, and we'll continue to do that on all levels. But I think, you know, again, back to that strategic comment of looking at what city property is available that we could turn over to developers or help incentivize. You know, we need to look at senior living facilities as well. Those individuals that are looking to retire and move out, of course, opening up other houses that can be moved back into.
Right.
But they have to have the right facilities to go to.
Yeah. Okay. Well, another topic of discussion for several years in Frankfurt has been an indoor pool. And there's also talk possibly about two pools, you know, an indoor pool, another community pool. What are your thoughts on, on those projects?
We definitely need it. You know, it's a great thing, you know, to look at the usage of the facilities we have now. Every time it's a great day and the aquatic center's open, they're usually posting that they're closed, or excuse me, not closed, but not allowing any more people in, kind of one in, one out.
Right.
Because they're at capacity. So we know it's a service that's in demand. We have contributed, you know, the million dollars to the Kentucky State University Actum Center before, and I would support that again. We are waiting for that final report back as well. We need to make sure that we continue to look at what areas we could build on, partner on. Is it going to be a city, a county project? Is it going to be both? Or are we going to partner with the school systems? You know, there's been conversations about the school having property that they'd be willing to donate for the pool facility alone, but not necessarily an aquatic center.
Right.
So that doesn't necessarily meet our goal.
Yeah.
Providing a full indoor aquatic center. It's definitely something that we're going to have to pursue though, because the need is there. But, you know, we're talking tens of millions of dollars. And that's just to build. We have to also consider what, what is going to be the ongoing cost of operation on these facilities as well? And how are we going to pay for that? And how are we going to staff that? How are we going to expand our parks department essentially?
Yeah. Well, I mean, right now, that's a little bit of a struggle with the parks meeting their budget goals as well. I know that's something you all have been addressing.
Right. You know, to me, parks, parks are a amenity. You know, they are not intended to be a for-profit organization.
Yeah.
That being said, I think it's really important that we do tackle it from a business minded standpoint of looking at what are, what are our daily operational costs on these facilities? What does it cost to play around a golf, really and truly? What does it cost us to keep the facility open, to staff it, and then make decisions based on that?
Okay.
There were talks about, you know, increasing park rates, $5, $10, some more than that. What I think is important is to let, there was the conversation about going to an association model for the sports programs. That'll weigh heavy on my decision on deciding to increase or not increase rates. But it is crucial for, for us to understand that as costs go up, you know, across for everybody, they also go up for the, for the government as well.
Okay. The General Assembly included funding for Frankfurt Convention Center in its budget in 2024. What is your plan to ensure the necessary additional funding needed for that project?
Well, we need to be, we need to be hitting the ground running right now, showing them that we're serious about the project. And the first thing I think we need to do is get the RFP out for the convention center again. You know, we released one once. It came back. It didn't necessarily meet all the needs and requirements that we were looking for. So we wanted to go back to the drawing table and resubmit another RFP. I think the legislature obviously knows the need and demand for that facility here. It would serve agencies of all types that have, that come to Frankfurt to do business, but leave Frankfurt to do a convention because there isn't space to do it here.
Right. How would you work to improve the relationship between the city and the community?
One of the most important things we can do, I think, is get the correct information out. This last budget cycle, you know, I prioritized and pushed for having a public information officer. I think it's vital that the capital city of the state has one. We have so much going on to be proud of. Sometimes we have things that, like the Broadway Bridge, for example, that come up that are emergency situations, that the community has, you know, just a slew of questions on that can get misconstrued if the right information is not out there. That's important. I think keeping the public informed through all sources of media will be crucial.
Okay. What ideas do you have for enhancing tourism and promoting Frankfurt's historical significance?
I think we need to continue to lean on something that, that I've spoken about, that I'm sure many people will continue to speak about is, is the bourbon tourism market. One of the benefits of having a business downtown is having the pleasure of meeting the amount of tourists that come through our, our amazing city. It has been nothing short of amazing to see that number grow consistently over the years. So what we have to continue to do in Frankfurt to capitalize on that is give, you know, the best experience we can. I've always believed that in our downtown business district, especially in our historic districts, that it needs to kind of feel like an all inclusive resort.
Yeah.
You can, you have a place to stay. And once you get to your place to stay, you don't really need to think about how you're getting anywhere. The services are there.
Right.
Having the walking tours that we have, the self guided tours that we've helped fund with NEA grants, helping with the trolley that is now running back and forth from Buffalo Trace, continuing to get the information out, again, relying heavily on social media and being strategic on, on how we target our audiences. We, you know, we can look now at, at what the demographics are, the individuals that are coming to Frankfurt, where they're going and what they're doing. We need to capitalize on that.
Right. Well, how do you address concerns about crime and public safety in the city?
Continue to invest in public services into our first responders. Continue to invest in programs that help our first responders get out and get to engage with the community. You know, I think it's wonderful that our agency, our police agency is partnering with Kentucky State University to help offer classes. And continuing to partner again with Wanda Joyce, continuing to partner with E S Arts from that preventative standpoint and approach to the, to the problem. But then again, relying on technology. You know, one of the first conversations I had as city commissioner, trying to tackle the homeless population was coming in and talking with our assistant police chief at the time and emergency management director, and they were able to pull up, you know, the system that we use that tracks what crimes are being committed and where on a heat map. And, you know, was able to realize that the homelessness population and problem is, is not concentrated just to one specific area. This is a problem that affects our community from all sides, east side, west side, downtown. So you, you rely on that information. You make decisions based on that data. And you continue to seek grants and opportunities to, to help fund the agency to get new pieces of equipment, like the drones that we were able to get that help for search and rescue.
Okay. How would you work with state government officials given Frankfurt's role as the state capital?
Well, I think you got to keep the, the conversations open and honest and, and keep them positive. You, you engage every opportunity you can, whether it's, you know, a ribbon cutting or a ceremony going on at the Capitol, or reaching out via email, phone, all, all forms of communication to let them know the wants and needs of this community. Again, back to the grants, you know, we, the state has been a great partner with us to the opportunity that I've had to sit in this seat. And I've seen them really understand that Frankfurt has leadership now that is progressive in our thinking and excited for the opportunities that are here. You know, we've, we've jumped up and down and screamed for that convention center and the needs for it. And they heard us and they responded. And we're very appreciative of that.
Good. What are your thoughts on transparency in local government? And how would you ensure open communication with citizens? You, you mentioned the, having a public information officer.
Right. Yeah. Well, transparency, you know, is trust. It's the same thing. You have to have that. I think we have to continue to do what we're doing well, you know, continue to broadcast our meetings so that people can watch them if they can't be there on time. Continue to have the citizen comments, you know, one of the things we did talk about where we, we recently changed our working meetings from a five o'clock meeting time to a three o'clock meeting time was making sure that maybe we needed to add citizen comments to the end of the meetings as well.
Yeah.
Because there are individuals, obviously, most people are going to be working at that time. I think, again, at this point, it's going to be relying heavily on our public information officer. I like to see, one of the priorities for me, I kind of, when I was meeting with Blair, who's going to be taking that role on, she said, you know, what's kind of one of your priorities?
Yeah.
For this role? And I said, you know, a snapshot of what just happened in our meetings.
Yep.
You know, a brief synopsis, a Cliff Notes of, you know, kind of the most impactful decisions that we just made. They can be long. Our meetings can be. A lot of it is day to day operational passing, you know, conversations. But there are very, very, very impactful decisions that we make that affect the community, specific communities. And they need to be made aware of those things.
Okay. Well, we've reached the point in the show where you get to look into the camera over my left shoulder, ask the people for your vote and tell them anything, or how to, how to contact you and any other things you want to share that I didn't ask?
Well, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thanks again. Frankfurt, we are at a very, very exciting time in our community. I've spent the last three and a half years listening to your wants and to your needs and doing everything I can to bring those wants and needs into our meetings, to be as efficient as possible so that we can move forward together the way that we all want to. We have targeted certain areas of our community to help bring them up. We are excited for the, we just applied for a $20 million grant to help the lower income areas get needed assistance for home efficiency. We've done grants to help improve public infrastructure. We're going to continue to seek those opportunities and continue to do everything we can to get your wants and needs met. It's been an absolute pleasure serving as your city commissioner. And I look for the, excuse me, I look forward to the opportunity to continue to do so. I humbly ask for your vote. And if you ever need anything, you can reach out to me via email at K M A Y at Frankfurt dot K Y dot gov. Thank you.
Well, Kelly, I would thank you for coming by today. I know that our viewers appreciate hearing from you. And to our viewers, remember to get out and vote on Tuesday, November 5th. I'd like to thank you for your time. And remember also to tune into Channel 10 to see the results coming in on November 5th. And thank you. to see the results coming in on November 5th. And thank you.